Okay, good evening, everybody. Today is July 23rd, the time is 6:30 PM, and I am calling this meeting in the McComb Township Board of Trustees to order, and we will say the pledge.
Fudge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the better of things and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, trustee Cusmano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Papa?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Treasurer Jollet?
Here.
Clerk Posey here, supervisor Viviana?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Supervisor, we have one proposed add-on, which would be agenda item number 18, and it's for a request to hire part-time firefighters, and that's all I have.
Motion to approve with the added... Support. Any questions or discussion? Motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by trustee Cusmano, to approve the agenda as corrected, members please vote.
My mouse has got its tail caught underneath my laptop.
Same with mine, you got it?
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills. Motion to approve, support. Any questions or discussions on the bill run? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by trustee Papa, to approve the bills, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the previous meeting's minutes from July 9th.
Trustee Cusmano makes a motion to approve the minutes.
Support. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, motion by trustee Cusmano, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the previous meetings' minutes from July 9th, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Alright, this will take us to our first public comment period, so anybody who wants to make a public comment may do so now at the microphone on the right-hand side of the room, and this is for agenda items only. I don't see anyone making a move to the microphone, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Chairman, move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Any questions or discussions on the consent items? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the consent agenda, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Alright, this will take us to our unfinished business from the last meeting, this was a postponed item, is a request to award the custodial services contract for the rec center and DPW building to master maintenance in the amount of twenty-six thousand... Twenty... I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, is there a motion to approve? So move.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
Alright, good evening, board, so this agenda item was removed from the last agenda because Parks and Rec removed some additional workout machine cleaning, which updated the cost sheets and the scores on the evaluations. So both DPW and Parks and Rec utilized the RFP process, received five proposals, with the scoring determining that master maintenance had the highest score and was the lowest cost, and with the company to be awarded the contract. The new two-year contract starts September 11th, along with that, there are two optional two-year extensions. The first-year contract has a zero percent increase, with the two extensions having a three percent increase each contract. The confirmation of process memo is attached, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions or discussion? No, hearing none, motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Clerk Posey, to award the custodial services contract for the rec center and DPW building to master maintenance in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
This will take us to new business, under engineering, request to approve the sanitary sewer diversion of 22 Mile Road and Fairchild.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Mr. Van Teflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, this is actually making an adjustment to a previously approved diversion study that was done back in 2017. It's just changing the boundaries of the borders of the two districts to better match with the developer's game plan as far as the development of the property goes. So, we've reviewed it, it meets all, still meets all the five criteria that the township had established many years ago, and we are recommending approval with one condition, and that's that they deposit seventy-two thousand dollars with the township to cover the cost of future monitoring, flow monitoring, of the sewer that's along North Avenue. This was a condition in the previously approved diversion, but it was fifty-two thousand dollars, obviously it's been a few years, and so we've made an adjustment to the amount based on what we're seeing as far as flow monitoring goes now. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Teflin, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I guess, one question for council, should we put the condition in the motion? So, that being the case, where's the clerk Posey?
I will amend, yep, I agree to amend.
Trustee Oliver, if you could, your support, okay, there's no more discussion. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by trustee Oliver, to approve the sanitary sewer diversion for 22 Mile Road in the Fairchild area, condition on the developer depositing seventy-two thousand dollars with the township. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 11, this is a request to approve the start of the grease interceptor maintenance program with Eganix, Inc., in the amount of one-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. So move.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
Alright, so with this program, the township does not currently have a grease interceptor maintenance program, and grease is very prevalent in our sanitary sewers, impacting our lift stations and sanitary sewer infrastructure. This program will have Eganix go through every business that introduces what we call fog, or fats, oils, and greases into our system, which will include restaurants, oil change businesses, car washes, and others, gather information on the grease traps and making sure they're properly maintained. There'll be an educational component to the program to make sure all these businesses understand how to properly maintain their interceptors. Eganix will help draft an ordinance to make sure that all businesses stay under one-hundred parts per million when introducing grease into the sewer. There will be a GIS-based software platform that we can monitor and keep track of compliance with this program. The township will be covering the cost of the first year of this program, and DPW plans to set up a cost estimate that eventually will have all users share in the cost of this program, which would equate to roughly, at this point, about five-hundred-and-fifty dollars per user, per year. The township attorney has reviewed the contract, had no issues with it, confirmation of process memo is attached, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and just, so everyone's aware, so when you say users, these are commercial users, correct?
Commercial users, yes, thank you.
And can you explain briefly, I guess, the downstream consequences of not having a thorough grease interceptor program, or?
Yeah, so what ends up occurring is either the grease builds up into the pipe, and then ends up blocking the pipe, causing businesses to back up, or residents, because a lot of times residential homes are off of these lines, which could flood basements or businesses, or the grease ends up in our wet well, which damages our pumps or our electronic equipment, and then causing us emergency repairs to our system, because the grease hangs up a lot of the components that hang down, so a lot of risk involved in having this grease in the system.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin, would these businesses be inspected annually by, through this program?
Yes, they would.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Charlie?
So we have, for example, a row of restaurants, will you be able, will this system isolate a particular... ...commercial establishments that's putting out too much grease?
Yes, so what...
Zero rate on them?
Yes, so what will happen is, they will take a sample of their effluent, or the sewer that comes out of there, and their lead, they'll take a sample of it, take it to the lab, and they'll test if it reaches a hundred parts per million or more, we can now scientifically determine who is not complying with the ordinance, and then we can help educate them first, making sure that their grease trap is being properly maintained, and if they're not, if they are maintaining it, and it's not big enough, then we help them upsize it or get the proper-sized trap to prevent this damaging our system.
So, so if we get a commercial establishment that just ignores everything we do, do we have a fine system in place, or?
Yeah, the ordinance will have all that in place, yes.
To the step?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Is there, is my understanding that the sanitary sewer, whoever we pay for that, has got some program already regarding grease and oils, is that true? Do we get charged by McComb County as part of a component of our usage of their sanitary sewer?
Yeah, I'm sure a part of their invoice they give to us, there's a component to that, because any grease that we end up getting gets pumped down and goes to them, so they end up charging us, because all that grease ends up going to them, so if we can catch it before it gets there, we can hopefully minimize those costs long-term.
And have there been any discussions about a possible reduction in rate for sanitary sewer, or is it all pretty much waiting for us to move on?
It would have to wait and see, I don't know if they have an actual component where they could determine how much grease is coming from us, I think it would be a regional effort, not just a township effort, but that would be a discussion we could talk with the county about and see.
Alright, hopefully you'll remind me of that, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by trustee Oliver, to approve the grease interceptor maintenance program with Eganix in the amount of one-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Alright, our next item, is a request to approve the purchase of a track loader, trailer, and accessories from John Deere, in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and six cents. So moved.
Support.
Kevin?
Alright, so DPW is looking to purchase a track loader, or basically a skid steer on tracks, along with additional attachments, which is a broom, brush hog, and forks. A tilt trailer is also being included with this purchase, will be used to trailer our existing excavator we have in our arsenal. So DPW currently rents a tractor from a rental company for the Lucido River Park pathway to mow that multiple times a year, the town hall pond field outside here, a couple of other locations, and a bunch of, multiple easements for our sanitary sewer. We cut that once per year, but we should be cutting it three to four times per year with how much that grass grows, so that could be easily between six to eight thousand dollars a year minimum we'd be spending on renting equipment if we did this properly, so we felt it made sense to own the equipment versus consistently renting it from somebody else. This will also be used on any project that requires digging up water and sewer infrastructure to help simplify and speed up the cleanup process, on projects like water main breaks or service installations, it'll help keep township parking lots clean, could be an additional resource for snow season. Both DPW and facilities and grounds will utilize the equipment, John Deere is a Myideal customer, which conforms with the purchasing policy, confirmation of process memo is attached, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions or discussion?
Just for the board's information, that is a real goodbye for that unit, for all that equipment, okay, just passing the information along.
If you're nice to Kevin, he might let you come right on it.
Maybe.
Alright, hearing more discussion, motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Papa, to approve the purchase of a track loader, trailer, and accessories from John Deere, in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and six cents, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Alright, request to approve sanitary sewer sectional lining project to Duke's Root Control, Inc., in the amount of sixty thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. So moved. Support. Kevin?
Alright, so this project came about because during our TV and cleaning process, we found fifteen locations where DTE bored, or basically drilled boring rods through our sewer main. So with that, so this project is not in our CIP, wasn't planned, but due to some cost savings we had from previous projects, we were able to fit this one in. So we utilized the RFP process, four proposals were scored, Duke's was the lowest-cost and lowest-responsible proposal, so no interviews were necessary. Also, we did find one additional location during this year's TV and cleaning in the last week or so, so we may be adding that one as well to get it repaired. I have been in contact with DTE, and I am looking to get one-hundred percent reimbursement for this, so it's gonna be a tall task, but I'm working on getting this reimbursed and stay damaged our pipe, so I'll be working on that. Confirmation of process memo is attached, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Why do you say it's gonna be a tall task if it was at their fault?
Well, just, it's a, it's a, the communication can be tough, so it might take some time to get it back and forth and get it completed, so.
But you do anticipate that they'll...
I do anticipate it, yes.
Have you had anything like, happen like this in the past?
Well, I have not myself, no.
Yes.
Question, Kevin, can you explain this ride, is this a pole stabilizer that they put in, or?
No, so basically, that big green box in front of everyone's house, they put grounding rods on each corner to keep it, so, just to keep it from, if anything happens to it, the ground, the electric shock or whatever, it all goes to the ground versus attack, getting, hitting the houses. Some of these are planted right over our sewer, so when they drill down, even though our sewer is fifteen, eighteen feet deep, they're boring these things really far for some unodd reason, and so, I attached pictures in the agenda, but there's a bunch of pictures that show how far these things go, so they did remove these last year, and so we're just working on getting this done now, as soon as we possibly can.
So, in the future, are they gonna call Miss Dig to find out where our sewers are?
Yeah, we're, us and engineering have been working with DTE on trying to keep their stuff out of our sewer easement, we've been improving those processes to prevent this from the future.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I just had a quick question if I could, so I'm looking at these pictures, and like, how wide is that pipe? Is that like...
Some of those pipe are probably a twelve-inch or fifteen-inch pipe.
Okay, because those rods look huge, comparatively, so those are like...
Yeah, and when they poke a hole through, the holes, it's pretty substantial.
Yeah, some of it's like blocking half the pipe from that, so I'm just, I'm hoping we can get some reimbursement on that, because that's ridiculous, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, motion, I'm sorry, motion by trustee Papa, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the sanitary sewer sectional lining project for Duke's Root Control, Inc., in the amount of sixty thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Kevin? Moving on to HR items, this is a request to promote, we have a number of promotions here, we have a request to promote employee 3138.
Motion to approve.
Support. Mr. Tabak? Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, Board members. Human Resource posted internally for the position of Lead Accounting Clerk in the Finance Department. We received one application for the position. The candidate we are recommending is Elizabeth Lepary. Myself and Stacy Smith believe Elizabeth is well suited for the, for this position and should not have any issues performing the functions of the job due to her acknowledged skills and performance within the Finance Department. Elizabeth has been employed with the Township since August 1st of 2022. Since starting in the Finance Department, she has assisted with additional projects in other areas of finance and has shown her ability to catch on quickly and learn from her superiors. If approved, the effective date would be tomorrow, July 24th. This is a budgeted position, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? One comment I will make, and this is going to apply to all of the following items. These things were all presented by department heads during the budget process, discussed during a public meeting, during our budget hearings. So these things were all planned for. Final comment. No other thing else? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Papa, to approve the promotion of Elizabeth Lepary. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, request to promote employee 22730.
Make move to do so?
Support.
I meant to say so moved, but it didn't come out right. Making a move to do so.
Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you again. HR posted internally for the position of Clerical in the Supervisor's Office. We received one application for the position. The candidate we are recommending is Olivia Mazzola. Olivia has been working as a receptionist in the Supervisor's Office since March 27th of 2023 and has proven to be a team member, as well as, as well as taking on additional functions over the past two years. The functions are now more aligned now with those of a clerical position as opposed to those of a receptionist. Among those functions include record retention, assistance with grants, paying invoices, and assisting with other requests within the department. If approved, the effective date again would be tomorrow, July 24th. It is a budgeted position, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the promotion of Olivia Mazzola to Clerical. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to promote employee 2195.
Trustee Kuzma makes the motion, support.
Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you again. HR recruited for the position of Fire Inspector due to her voluntary resignation. We received one application for the position. The candidate we are recommending is firefighter Mike Azar. Myself and Chief Phillips believe Mike will excel in this role. Mike has employed, been employed as a full-time firefighter since December 25th, 2016. Since becoming full-time, Mike has earned a bachelor's degree in business from Wayne State, an associate's degree in fire science, attended the National Fire Academy, and most recently put himself for the Fire Inspector One program through the state of Michigan. If approved, the effective date would be August 3rd, 2025. Again, it's budgeted position, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Trustee Kuzma, supported by Trustee Papa, to approve the promotion of Michael Azar to Fire Inspector. Motion, members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Mike is in the audience, if you want to raise your hand.
Moving on to item 17, is a request to promote employee 2416. So moved, support. Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you. HR posted internally for the position of Maintenance Supervisor Two, position within the DPW department. We received one application for the position. The candidate we are recommending is Chris Nausic. Myself and Kevin Johnson believe Chris is well suited for this position. Chris has been supervising the maintenance team in the DPW department since 2023. Since 2023, Chris has increased his responsibilities and include the purchasing bidding process, overseeing project contractors, and managing the platform system that handles work orders, HVAC, security cameras, and proximity cards. If approved, the effective date would be tomorrow, July 24th. Again, in the budgeted position, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Trustee Lucido, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the promotion of Chris Nausic, the Supervisor Two. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, next item is item 18, which is a request to, this is the add-on, request to hire part-time firefighters. So moved, support. Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you again. HR received four, I'm sorry, three qualified applicants for our part-time firefighter positions that pass all requirements for the position. Myself, Chief Phillips, and DC Monroe interviewed all the applicants on July 16th, and we are recommending Derek Gabzinski, Tyler Miller, and Joshua Palmer. If approved, the higher, higher date would be August 4th, 2025. These are budgeted positions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the hiring of part-time firefighters. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Tabaka? Let's take us to item 19, is a request to approve the special event for Denewith Garden Center Fall Fun Center. Permanent parcel ID 081940009. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. You've had this before you a number of times for many years, but Denewith does a few special events each year, but they exceed the maximum length allowed for a special event, therefore they need board approval. This largely consists of just them putting extra signs out along the roadway. As you know, they're set back pretty far off of 22 Mile. Staff has reviewed this request, and we have no concerns. We're in support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the special event for Denewith Garden Center Fall, Fall Fun Center, permanent parcel 081940009. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, this will take us to item 20. So the next item is an information-only agenda item. It's a priority waste, waste hauler update. So we know at the last meeting, the board voted to send a letter of default. That letter was sent the following day by our attorney. Since then, we have been in communication with the leadership team at Priority. We, Tim and I met with them last Friday. We had a productive conversation. They reiterated their commitment to catch up on the work that's been behind. They indicated again that they have new equipment that they're placing in service. And they, a pledge to improve their communication with the township and the township team. Since then, I will say that service, at least from what we can tell from the Supervisor's Office, based on the number of calls and emails that we've been getting, seems to have improved rather dramatically. I can't say that we're back to the levels we were in the early spring/winter, but certainly the calls have fallen off to my office. It seems like a lot of the multi-day pickups, missed pickups have been resolved. I haven't, didn't hear of any new ones reported today. I have been sending the CEO and the COO sort of a daily update this week. Their regular staff that my, my team communicates with, they seem to be getting things done. I've heard reports of at least one or two new trucks being deployed in our community. And at this point, I am cautiously optimistic that our service is going to return to normal. While there might be an occasional issue, as there always is in all types of service, I am hoping that the sort of difficult period that we have been going through is on the mend. Mr. Tomlinson, do you have anything to add?
I agree with you.
That being said, given that we've experienced this the last few months, my office is committed to at least going through the process of continuing to do due diligence, continuing to monitor. We will, going to do everything we can to prepare ourselves so that this doesn't happen again and educate ourselves on sort of the waste hauler, either issues and alternatives. So with that, I will take any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that you're in communication with all the supervisors and-
Yes. So what I can tell you is the Macomb County and supervisors that I've been spoken to, we've been sharing information, sharing research. We've been communicating on a fairly regular basis. Everyone has the same concerns. Now, what I will say is I did meet with a joint meeting of supervisors of Oakland and Macomb County this past Monday. And it does seem that, you know, the explanation given us to by Priority, which is that their equipment in the Sterling Heights yard is subpar and that they're, they're bringing in new equipment for, that does seem to track, because our Oakland County neighbors have told me that they are not experiencing the same pickup problems that we have been, including Waterford, which is the biggest township in Oakland County. They have not had the missed pickup issues that we have had. But they're being serviced out of a different yard, presumably with better equipment. So things are going in the right direction.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to recognize your due diligence, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzma.
As a member of this board and also as a customer of Priority. Thank you.
So hopefully those residents who are, continue to be affected, should feel free to reach out to my office, and we will continue to do our, everything we can to make sure your problems are resolved. And we are hoping our partners at Priority continue to improve service. With that, we'll move on to the next item. Item 21 is a request to adopt the resolution to participate in an opioid settlement with Purdue Pharma. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Repeat? Yep. So we've approved a number of these, and there's a second one that's going to follow this one up. These litigations continue to pop up from various Attorney Generals, and eventually Michigan joins with them. And I don't know how many more of these cases are out there. I don't know if, Tim, you have any idea, but-
It's, it's got to be at the end.
We've approved, I think, at least four or five of them already.
We have.
And this just tracks. We're, we are collecting these proceeds in a fund. They can only be, they're restricted in their ability to use them. Clerk Posey and I have discussed what might we, we bring to the board eventually with a program, and she's going to continue to do research so that we can use these to the benefit of our community. But in the meantime, you know, we will continue to approve these, joining these, participate in these settlements as they pop up, because it only makes sense.
I would agree.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Is this about the fourth year this has been coming around?
Maybe, fourth or, third or fourth year, yeah.
Yeah, since 2020, I believe.
Yeah. The dominoes continue to fall, is what comes down to it.
Yeah.
We are getting to the end, though Purdue is probably one of the largest, quite frankly. And I'm sure they were waiting to see what everyone else is doing.
So we're going to get these funds, I think, I think the payouts range from like 10 to 15 years, roughly, if I'm not mistaken. So we're going to have this flow of income for a long time, and we're going to have to have some developed programs in order to spend it, because that is, it is pretty restricted on what we can spend it on. It has to be related to the opioid crisis, in broadly speaking.
Very limited, and, you know, in some respects, communities are struggling to look at, what are we going to do?
What do we do with it, yep?
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, so oddly, you know, ironically enough, today I did, I met with Families Act Now, which used to be Families Against Narcotics, and they are approved to, for us to provide this resource of money to them. And we wanted to find a way that we could educate in the schools, but also educate families in our community that are struggling with children or family members with addiction on how they can receive help, and the help that they receive is at no cost to them. So it's information that's extremely helpful to them, but it's not publicly known. So today they sent over a proposal. I'm going through it right now and reviewing, and I think we, as a board, will be happy with all the resources that they will provide to the community. Once we finalize that, I'll bring it to the board to review that, and then we would approve the distribution of that money.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Anyone else have any questions? Yep.
The, the money is, have we received money so far?
We have, and I, we asked Stacy the other day, we were roughly $130,000 sitting in a restricted fund, yes.
Okay. Then when we find out what we can really start doing with it, then we're going to disperse it.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Do we know how much we're going to get in all?
You know, these last couple, they didn't provide us dollars yet. Usually they have to go through the opt-in process and then calculate.
How many people opt in?
So, I, I honestly don't know the total dollars that we'll get at the end of all this. So we've been, so it's got to be about around 20 grand a year we're getting right now, give or take. $400,000 total over that.
Because what I worry about is if we establish some sort of program, and then-
The funding runs out?
Ten years from now, the funding runs out, we're going to look like we cut some program.
I can answer that question. So that was actually in the proposal that annually we contribute $20,000. I asked that they reword it to where we would contribute that $20,000 annually as long as the settlement funds remain. So I-
Sounds good.
Take care of that.
And we'll be half the, some, all the communities participating and the programs themselves will, but that's going to be 10 to 15 years down the line.
Yep.
Maybe we'll have conquered the crisis by then, hopefully.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to adopt the resolution to participate in an opioid settlement with Purdue Pharma. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor. Clerk Posey, yes?
Trustee Lucido.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Trustee Papa?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviana?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. All right, the next item is the exact same thing with a different group of companies. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to participate in the opioid settlement with Alvegen, Amneal, Apatex, I'm going to destroy all these names, Hikma, Indevire, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus?
So moved.
Support. I'm not going to say all those names again. Any questions or discussion on this? Hearing none. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to adopt the resolution to participate in the opioid settlement with all of the companies I just mentioned. Members, please vote. I'm sorry, Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Trustee Papa?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviana?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. All right, this will take us to our second public comment of the evening. This is for non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to make public comment may do so now at the microphone. Yes. Just give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have a three-minute time limit.
Yasser Khan, 56865 Hartley. I'm in Shelby Township, but grew up in Macomb. This is actually for a class.
Okay, that's fine. You can just speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
So just have a short paragraph. Our healthcare system is failing us. At the end of our lives, 80% of Americans would prefer to die in a home or home-like environment. Yet four out of five deaths in the United States occur in hospitals and nursing homes. Individuals near the end of life are often not in the physical, mental, or cognitive state to make their own decisions. This information reveals a staggering disconnect between what we would like and what is happening. The reasons for this disconnect are multifaceted. The reasons for this disconnect are multifaceted. Uh, one major cause is the lack of legal documents that state end-of-life wishes, known as advance directives. Uh, it is estimated that only thirty percent of Americans have completed advanced directives. I strongly encourage every American to complete advanced directives so that our wishes are honored when we near the end of our lives and that the board consider an event at the senior center to encourage seniors to complete or learn more about advanced directives. Well, it probably applies to all of us, but
That's true.
This is for a class, but this was very informative, first time attending, uh, any board meeting, so.
Great. Well, thank you, thank you for participating.
Yep.
All right, anyone else? I don't see anyone else, so we're going to move on to board comments. Trustee Lucido?
Uh, just real quickly, uh, congratulations to all the promotions and new hires. I don't know all the names, I don't know all the, uh, uh, all the people involved, but I, I've heard these names many times of the promoted people and I, I've always heard good things about them, so I wish them well and thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido. Trustee Papa?
Yes, I'll also congratulate those folks as well. Elizabeth, Olivia, Michael, Chris, Derek, Tyler, Joshua.
You going to sing that?
Yeah, I could. Uh, but, uh, yeah, congratulations and, and welcome aboard for those who are joining us. Nothing else to add other than the fact that the, uh, they've had the Music in the Park series the last couple of weeks. Really enjoyed those and looking forward to the remaining, uh, events, so. I know it'll be hot tomorrow, but, uh, I'll still be out there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Papa. Trustee Oliver?
Same thing. Appreciate all the people stepping up, taking the promotions and moving forward in our township. Also, I, to follow up on Mr. Kuzma, I would like to thank, uh, your department for taking all those calls. That was pretty hectic for a while and it seems like they've settled things. It's, it has settled down a little bit. Hopefully moving in the right direction. That's it.
Thank you, Char, thank you, Charlie. Trustee Kuzma?
Congratulations to the new, uh, newly promoted employees. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzma. Treasurer Gillette?
Not, not much to add, other than, uh, you know, what, the people that work at this township, uh, are not your typical, stereotypical perceived bureaucrat or government worker. They're people who are part of a team and they are committed to the mission of the township and making this a good place for people to live and a, and a great value for people to live in, so. I'm enthusiastic to work with them every day and I'm glad to see so many promotions. Um, and I look forward to Music in the Park tomorrow.
Thank you. Clerk Posey?
Uh, similar to what Treasurer Julian, uh, Gillette said, but I would just like to point out that a, a promotion is a reflection of hard work, dedication, commitment, and what we do is customer service, so to have that many on a agenda at what, at what time shows the commitment that we have here in Macomb Township and the value that the employees have here. So I appreciate them and I enjoy working with them every day as well. And congratulations to the firefighters that are joining our team. We look forward to working with you and meeting you as well.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. I guess same thing, uh, looking forward to, uh, some new firefighters joining the team. As to our promotions, I, I guess, uh, the general public doesn't have, uh, doesn't really interact with a lot of the township staff on a day-to-day basis. And if you were like me, that you hope to never interact with them, but I will say that we have a, an amazing group of professionals here that do great work every day. And, you know, the fact that you don't get, have to interact with them very often is a testament to their, to their work. We want your lives to go about, um, without having to deal with us at all. And because of their hard work, that's possible, so. That's all I got.
Counselor in the park tomorrow.
Counselor in the park tomorrow. Hope to see everybody there. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support. Any questions or discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote.
I'm a yes.
Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.